For approval of minutes from the September 25 meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
First, elected comments. Just have one comment. I was out yesterday and read into a member of Little League who was complaining to me about field not at J.C., not being done yet. And I spoke with Scott Erskine. And apparently we've approved a budget of $75,000 for improvements to that field. And while I assured him that I knew that the work was being attempted, I'm starting to have second thoughts as to whether or not it's the right time to do, to spend $75,000 on a baseball field that really doesn't have that much wrong with it at this point. We could do some remedial work and fix it. So I think, I'd like to take a second look at that. It's programmed to be spent, but with the way things are going with the state and, you know, the condition of our finances moving forward, I just think it deserves a second look.
Are you, are you thinking that you would have Scott come back with a, some sort of alternate proposal?
Yeah, do some remediations, you know, because this is replacing fencing, digging into the hill, moving dugouts, a lot of stuff that, you know, it's $75,000 worth of work.
Have you had a chance to talk with him?
Yes, I did.
Oh, he's in, he's in.
Morning.
He's here.
Any sense of how long it will take to, to do those calculations?
I'm hopefully meeting a contractor this week who can play in telephone tag, who's actually does athletic field work as a contractor. So it'll probably give me, if you give me a week or so. I have a lot of the cost estimates are ready as far as spending and why not instead of actual field work that I need to get me involved.
So I think when, when it comes back to the board, it might be helpful to restate what the original project, what was driving the original project?
Right.
And what's driving the, you know, the, the sea between. I mean, I mean, obviously the fiscal concerns are driving the reason for relooking at it.
Exactly.
I wonder, I wonder even just to elevate the conversation even one step further, you know, and we'll talk about this maybe later in a separate topic, but, you know, it almost begs the question of looking at, you know, the entire set of projects as opposed to maybe just one project. The reality is, we're going to be in a tough situation where we're going to have to be looking at, I think, squeezing a little bit. And, you know, I think we've, we've got to be careful not to be too myopic on, on one particular project.
Oh, yes, absolutely. But I also, you know, will be probably my proposal relative to all of our expenditures moving forward.
Scotty, are you suggesting that a future agenda should have a quick review of all the projects?
Oh, yeah, and I think we, we may talk about it in a, in a subsequent topic later as we propose sort of a, a plan of action relative to the, our planning's capital improvement process that Bruce and I will chat about, I think, as we open the agenda.
It's all ties together.
Yeah.
It's all part of the same thing. Thank you.
But yes, yes.
Citizen comments. Walter?
Good morning. Chief England, really, maybe a little bit of a third. A, in light of the shootings out in Las Vegas, I have previously called up to this board, asking you to form a resolution in regards to the bullet ridden Madison sign that's over at Moxie, right outside the bar. I know you can't order him to remove it, but I would like a sense from this board, a resolution, whatever you want to call it, urging him to remove this sign. And I urge anybody who's listening, do not go to Moxie. That's my opinion because this, Mr., what's his name's opinion was, and he said it publicly with witnesses, this is my editorial on the town of Madison. So if that's his editorial on the town of Madison, I call upon everybody to go somewhere else for their food or whatever. Second thing, I've approached this board before and have approached the Board of Education. I would like you to also make a resolution urging the Board of Education to do pre-employment, pre-employment drug testing on all prospective employees of the Board of Education. I've been told by Tom that he believes that all of our other employees for the town of Madison undergo pre-employment drug testing before they're hired. And I see no reason why the teachers and the people that are working for the Board of Education, who spend most of the children's daylight hours, there is no reason on God's earth not to drug test. And just as a little side here, I don't know a single teacher in this town. I don't know anybody. I didn't raise my kids in this education system here in Madison. But I urge, and there's no known reason, everybody else gets pre-employment, and I believe, I'm not sure, but I believe the police department, as in my police department that I work in, they can come in anytime, part of the contract, they can come in anytime, tell you to provide a specimen, and if you're positive, you're born. And I think this is a no-brainer, and I would like this Board of Selectmen to do something about this in a resolution form or whatever. It's intolerable to me that the Board of Ed is refusing to do pre-employment drug testing. Next thing is a minor thing, but somebody just mentioned to me this morning about the seaplane thing, and a lot of people kayak and canoe, et cetera, and their, their concern is, where's the seaplane going to land and are there going to, is there going to be buoys or something else to outline where they would be? Because the people that I spoke to this morning were concerned about kayaking, et cetera. And on a more lighter note, I am totally against removing the statue of Tom Vanish up at the Radey Circle.
There was one. That's it. That's already a dying process. Wow.
Number six, discuss and take action to approve the communications dispatcher's records. United Public Service Employees Union contract effective July 1st, 2017 to June 30th, 2021. Deb, would you like to say anything?
Just briefly, I gave you a summary of the negotiations between the parties. There's some fairly substantial changes to the medical plan in this contract, and, you know, to the union's credit, I think they recognize that healthcare is one of the biggest cost factors that a municipality face. The wage is right within state average. We're not high, we're not low, we're right in between. And, you know, I think there's a lot of positives for both labor and the investment in this agreement. It is a five-year agreement. We are going to try to move forward with five-year agreements on all of our labor contracts for better fiscal planning purposes.
Great, thank you. And thanks for all the information.
I want to start you then.
Yeah, we like that.
Okay, so I'll accept the motion to approve the contract?
Motion approved.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Discuss and take action to approve the following resolution. Resolve the Board of Selectmen at a duly authorized meeting held on October 10th, 2017. Hereby approve, confirm, and ratify the amendment and restatement of the retirement plan for the employees of the town of Madison, Connecticut, parentheses, plan, and authorize its submission to a vote of the electorate at a town meeting as prescribed by the charter.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Again, Deb, I'd like to thank you for all the work you did putting this together. This was a major update of our, the language and our, took quite a while, but appreciate the reference.
Hi, thank you. Dr. Monte from the Town Attorney's Firm is here. I just want to introduce him to the board and also to thank him. He worked with me hand in hand throughout the last almost four years to get this to the point where it's correct and stated properly. I just appreciate his help.
Great, thanks. Would you like to make any comments?
Well, what you just approved, gentlemen, is an amendment and restatement of the plan. And there were really two reasons for it. The first was to bring the plan into compliance with federal legislation that occurred over the last number of years. The other was just to update the status quo. The plan to match the status quo as far as administration, et cetera, of the, of the plan.
Great, thank you.
Tom, I'm all favor having approved this. I had a couple of technical questions, as long as we have the attorney here. I'm looking at section 9.02, and it indicates that the plan administrator has certain powers to correct any technical defects or reconcile any inconsistencies. And I'm just wondering how broad that is because obviously we needed outside help to redo this plan, which corrected consistencies, inconsistencies. So how broad of an authority is this, 9.02?
I'm going to try and find that section. The plan admin, it reads, "The plan administrator may correct any technical defect or reconcile any inconsistencies shall be necessary to carry out the intention of the plan."
I guess the, the reason I'm asking this is, is this board doesn't get around to updating the plan with great frequency. We think it's been kind of 20 years. So in the interim, I'm trying to understand, does this grant the plan administrator the authority to make adjustments to this plan when inconsistencies are uncovered or?
I, I believe that this clause that we're reading here now is designed to allow the plan administrator to resolve inconsistencies in the wording of the plan if they are found. So in the prior plan, for example, there were sections that, oh, might refer at one point to the retirement board, and then another section, because it was adopted at a later date, referred to the pension board, and interpreted, interpreted literally, if the plan administrator has no power to interpret, maybe nothing could get done because it says the retirement board can do this in one section, and then it says the pension board cannot do that in another section. And this is a hypothetical, but if, if there were no power to interpret, then those inconsistencies couldn't be resolved.
Can the plan administrator physically change the wording of this document?
That is, that is not the intent. For an amendment to the plan, it would have to go before the Board of Selectmen and, and the town meeting.
So it really has more to do with interpretation than actually physically changing the plan?
Correct.
That's helpful. In that same section, the last paragraph indicates that the retirement board shall have the authority to appoint, reappoint, and replace an investment advisor. That's the last sentence. And I'm wondering whether we, the Board of Selectmen, think that that's our job?
Don't they recommend us to make the change?
That's how we've been operating, Tom. Because when, when I read this, I'm reading something that sounds slightly different. And I'm not advocating one way or the other. I just, I'm just pointing it out to us that.
The next sentence, the next paragraph to the page references the Board of Selectmen.
So perhaps there's a, perhaps there's a miscommunication or misunderstanding about two functions. There's an investment advisor, and the human resources director here can remind us who who that is. I don't remember, but the, I'm sorry?
G Y L, right?
Yeah.
So the investment advisor will come to the retirement board and say, well, we had a great game, we're doing well, or the market's going south on us, or I recommend that we reallocate our holdings, put more in long-term, more in short-term stocks, bonds, et cetera. That's the investment advisor. Then there's something called the directed trustee, or as I prefer to call it, the custodian, and that's Reliance Trust. Reliance Trust follows the directives of the pension board and the investment advisor. So the investment, the pension board will communicate with the investment advisor, and the investment advisor will talk to Reliance Trust. So those are the two things, what, the two groups. So what you see here is the retirement board shall have the authority to appoint, reappoint, and replace an investment advisor. That's your investment advisor. The Board of Selectmen has the authority to appoint and reappoint Reliance Trust or its successor as the directed trustee or custodian.
All righty, I, I understand what you said. I guess I'm really talking to my colleagues here for a moment. And that is, the actual appointment of the investment advisor, is that something that we feel the Board of Selectmen should do, or is that something we are comfortable having the retirement board do, perhaps after consulting with the Board of Selectmen? It, I'm really just trying to clarify a gray area. It's been gray a long time.
What's happened in the past? What is the, is it typical that the retirement board would recommend to the Board of Selectmen?
So you see, what do you?
I would say, despite reading the charter and knowing how other committees run, that it would be a recommendation and the Board of Selectmen should have a final approval, which it says in any contract.
Okay. I guess then are, are we in any way uncomfortable with the way this is worded? I'm not, because it says right here, shall have the authority to appoint, reappoint.
In the next paragraph?
That's two different.
Yeah, that's two different things.
I think you would not choose the last.
Yeah, this one's for the investment advisor.
We can, we can certainly revise the last sentence of the third paragraph of 9.02 to say, "The Board of Selectmen, upon recommendation of the retirement board, shall have the authority to appoint, reappoint, and replace an investment advisor for the trust fund."
Or what about just the retirement board shall recommend an investment to the Board of Selectmen or something simple?
I like, I think, I like what you said, because you said, we'll, we'll have the authority to make a decision on their recommendation.
Correct.
The only thing with the way you said it was, it still gives the retirement board the authority to pick the investment advisor, and if you don't like it, then you have to go back and have them, you know, make another choice.
That is correct. We could, we could also say, we could just replace retirement board with the Board of Selectmen. So we could say the Board of Selectmen shall have the authority to appoint, reappoint, and replace an investment advisor for the trust fund.
Were you happy with that?
I'm fine with that, but.
Well, I'm not, because what that does, that takes everything away from the, of the retirement board, that they have no, no forum in wait.
It's like CIP, you want to base it on a recommendation.
I think that the retirement board shall have the authority to recommend to the Board of Selectmen the appointment of an investment advisor. Doesn't require the Board of Selectmen to do that, even if they recommend it.
So. If I could just jump in on that. The intention was to define who has the authority to appoint.
Yeah.
So I would recommend that however you end up phrasing it, whether it's recommend to the board or not, I would recommend that there, it be clear who has the authority to appoint, whether it's on a recommendation or not.
Well, clearly, I think the Board of Selectmen should have the authority to appoint, but I want to include the opportunity for the pension board to make a recommendation because clearly the Board of Selectmen doesn't meet with the investment advisor, we only get a report, and the pension board is the one that works with them on a regular basis. So I'd like it reworded to say that the pension board may recommend to the Board of Selectmen for appointment. Whatever the right words are that fit in there.
Do we need to approve that now, so that?
I think you'd have to take and make, I think we'd have to move to make an amendment to the plan that we just approved, because we do approve the plan.
I think what Bob is describing is the current practice, as we understand it.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's in the spirit of, of what we were trying to accomplish here, was to match the plan with the practices in place. And the old plan had become dramatically not, not matching. So this is, this is a great exercise right here to, to make that happen.
So I think we need to get, whatever wording we're going to change, are we going to change anything here? We need to do it right now because we've got a public hearing that we're setting up.
Absolutely, so.
We can refer to our attorney to.
Yeah, let me, others change anything you want?
I have one other question I wanted to change, but let me deal with this. I'm looking at section 1101, which has to do with, as I understand, our, our other pension program, which is our 401 program. Am I correct, Deb? This doesn't deal with the defined benefit pension plan. Section 11 deals with the defined contribution plan?
This is the, this is the pension plan for town employees.
No, it's section 401 of the IRS code.
Okay. Is, is, is this the, is this still the defined benefit pension plan?
It is.
Yes. The D.C. plan is a 501, or 401A plan.
That's what's confusing me.
That's different, yeah.
That's different.
This is a code, section in IRS code, steps.
And it's just coincidentally, section 401. I withdraw my question. I was really confused. I'm done, Tom.
Thank you. So what are we changing the wording to on 902?
Okay, let me go back up to 902.
Can I make a recommendation to maybe simplify this? Just say the Board of Selectmen shall have the authority to appoint, reappoint, and replace an investment advisor for the trust fund upon the recommendation of the retirement board?
Very well.
I work with that.
Yeah, that's great.
I move we amend the previously approved, I'm sorry, agreement to that.
Second.
You got that, Lauren? Okay. My motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Good job.
I have one final question.
Now, do you read these at night, by the way? When do you read these? My goodness.
While he's driving.
We wanted to ask, Deb, we have two other pension plans in town, the firemen and the police. Is there any need to reexamine either of those documents?
The fire we haven't undertaken, the police is probably going to be coming before you sometime in the spring. I think with the, the police document, if members so to be correct, is not as in disarray as the town plan was. So, and the union has a copy of the red line to look through as well, too, for the police.
So over time, we'll, we'll have a look at both of them?
Yes.
Thanks, Bob.
Okay. Number eight, discuss and take action to call a special town meeting on Monday, October 23rd, 2017, in the town campus room A, to approve the amendment and restatement of the retirement plan for the employees of the town of Madison, Connecticut.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So this would be before our next meeting. Number nine, discuss and take action on the appointment of Tim Lund as a per diem fire investigator at a rate of 26.1 per hour, located within the fire marshal's office. The position is exempt.
So moved.
Second.
Samuel, say anything?
Just a per diem, just to cover on, like, weekends and nights when we're not available.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number 10, discuss and take action to approve the following resolution. Resolve that the town of Madison may enter into, with and deliver to the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, any and all documents which it deems necessary or appropriate. And further resolve that founder Jay Vanish, as first elected of the town of Madison, is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the town of Madison, and to do and perform all acts and things which he deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents, including but not limited to executing and delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by such documents.
So moved.
Second.
If you have any questions about that?
Yeah, actually, actually, sorry, I do. Is, is there any risk in us putting your specific name in there for future down the road? Should, would we just change it?
If I dive, we just change it.
Yeah, okay. I'm not, I'm not asking that. Very good. Thanks.
Did I have a motion?
You did. You did, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number 11, discuss and take action to approve the application for a matching grant.
Tom, before you start this one, we need to call in to the rest of the Board of Finance because you're going to review this and then adjourn to the Board of Finance when you get 8:30.
Let me go back to our meeting.
Boy, what timing.
We're engaging in a not procedural zone.
Yeah, this is it. Loose interpretation.
Let me just email the rest of the Board of Finance when we call.
So are we adjourning?
Quite a few of them right here.
No, you can review it in your meeting and then vote, and then we will adjourn to the Board of Finance so that they can vote, and then we'll adjourn back to your meeting for the rest of your agenda.
Fantastic.
It's like a layover. You're in Atlanta for about 15 minutes.
Complimentary drinks will be served.
It's not that long a flight.
Leave it to you, Joe. Leave it to you.
I can do this. This is all Lauren. I'd like you to look at Claire.
Thanks, Tom, my, but it's all clear.
Sam, at least you got Tim before we blamed you.
Thank you for calling the Connex Meet Now Conference Service. Please enter your passcode, followed by the pound or hash key, and I'll connect you. Please hold while I confirm your passcode. Thank you. Your passcode is confirmed. If you are the host of this meeting, press the star key now. Please enter your host's security code, followed by the pound or hash key. Thank you. Your security code is confirmed. When you hear the tone, you will be the second person to join the meeting.
Hello? Hello?
Good morning, this is Bennett.
Hey, Bennett.
All right, we are four of them.
All right.
We have four.
Who's the fourth?
She's hiding in the corner.
Yeah, if you included vice, I have.
Now I can read this, right?
Yeah.
Discuss and take action to approve the application for a matching grant from the Emergency Management Department to replace the town emergency generator. 25% match from the town is for an amount not to exceed $37,500. Have a motion?
Nope, second. So moved.
So moved and second.
Right.
In the wrong order.
Tell me, go.
You vote.
So we're, does everybody understand what's going on here? The generator on town campus is getting, reaching its, the end of its life, we think, and so we're looking for a grant from State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services to replace it.
And it's a 75% grant from the state, 25% from the?
Right. We're voting on the fact that there's a match. So if it was full grant, we wouldn't have to vote on the fact that there's a match.
From the feds. Those are the states, but it's, the grant is from the federal government. We have to pipe to the states first, and then the states takes all the grants from State of Connecticut, and they pipe to the feds, and hopefully we get the money. The generator's 23 years old, being the looks at it, generator's lifespan is 19 years, so we're like four years past its life expectancy. So I think we have a pretty good shot of receiving a grant, but who knows?
Sam, could you kindly just review the matching percentages?
So the, the match for this grant is 75, if you give us 75%, and the town's match is 25%. We're going to ask for. We're going to ask $150,000. There's a little bit of contingency money in there, so it might not be $150,000 at the end. You know, they're only going to, you only have to match when you expend.
Does that include installation?
Yes.
Is there value to the old generator?
I don't believe so. We didn't discuss that with the...
Who's Kevin?
Hi, Kevin. We're at the Board of Selectment, so they're just reviewing the grant application now, then we'll kick in.
We didn't discuss that with the vendor, Kinsey, that's our maintenance. But we're also going to put in, the maintenance, I don't know if they're going to give us any money for maintenance, but it's about $1,300 a year to maintain the generator. We currently pay now. So what was it about the match? Say, answer your question about the...
But the exposure to the town, as we're saying, is 37.5 max.
Correct, yes. Would be less.
So do we, do we take delivery of the generator and then hope for the grant money to come back?
No, we got to get approved for the grant.
And then we go out?
Then we order the generator.
And is this a budgeted amount for us, this 37.5 account, or is this an unplanned expenditure?
It's in our five-year plan. It's not funded at this point.
But it's not within the current budget.
It's in the next year's CIP.
It is in the next year's CIP.
So what is the expected timeframe to receive notification?
It could be a year, it could be two years.
So it will work into the CIP.
So that's why, so that's why we're going to kind of up the price because right now the generator, the cost of generator right now is $125,000. So Kinsey said at 3% a year. Only went on two years, added the money, and then a little bit for contingency.
So it would be advisable to put it in next year's budget?
Yes.
As a high priority.
You know, we all know how fast the federal government moves, so I don't expect, I don't expect to be awarded before July this year, to be honest with you.
Yeah, I agree.
If we get awarded at all.
Tom, this is a bit of a tangent, but how does this strategy work into the microgrid project?
It's an alternate strategy. If we can do the microgrid, this becomes, we don't need it.
Okay, so is that, I mean, we all were, that's the common understanding?
Yeah, so we don't, the microgrid never comes to fruition, and at least we have, hopefully we're going to have some money to replace the existing generator.
And by the time this becomes a reality, we'll have clarity on the microgrid and know that we... Okay, good.
So the plans are colliding, it sounds like.
That's good. Unless I'm mistaken, you still need generation within the microgrid, right? So you're still going to need a generator.
Except that they're looking at a different technology of generation.
I don't know if, yeah, it's a different technology, and I don't know if we're going to use the same one for it. If we get awarded the grant and that happens, we can ask them, certainly ask them.
That'd be a happy problem.
Yes.
Sam, if we decide to pursue a different technology, could these funds still be applied to that other technology?
I'm not sure. We'd have to ask.
I don't think we'd need to, because the other one is covered by a grant, too. Microgrid.
But I think it's just the hookups.
They're different grants, and all the details are still being worked out, so it's a little bit of a going down the road two ways. Hopefully one will work out.
So one question came to my mind is if we don't need it here for some reason, could we, is there a generator over at Paulson Campus that needs to be replaced?
No, there's no generator there at all.
So we need to put one there.
Yeah, so if we end up doing a microgrid here and don't need it, we could see if that could be used. But, but the key part of this grant is it has to be a critical facility.
Okay, right.
So because we have the shelter here and we're in the operations center, we stand more of a chance of receiving the grant.
Is it possible to broaden out the language of this application so that it might cover the microgrid as well, should we go in that direction? This is very specific about a generator.
It wouldn't cover the microgrid.
Two separate, two separate...
So the money, the money that's, this is coming out of is pre-disaster mitigation grant, and it's specific towards, you know, preventing damage to your infrastructure as far as flooding, you know, power loss and stuff like that. So it's very specific what you could ask for within this grant.
Yeah.
I think maybe only Al would remember that the, that we did run into a problem with our existing shelter here is in floodplain, depending on the size of the storm. So if you ran into the happy circumstance and wanted to look at, there was sort of, you know, quick conversations about the senior center where Paulson, as logical second sites, you can make an exceptionally good argument that one of those should be generated up.
As part of this whole thing, we're looking at all that stuff.
Right, which would then mean that you could potentially designate that a critical facility to move.
Just purchase it for a different location, is what we're saying.
Right. If you have the grant money for it, we have a good reason why we need it.
We moved the EOC over to Paulson. That would, we could, we could do that, yeah. Okay, any other discussion? Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Will be adjourned?
No, you need to motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Finance meeting.
Motion to adjourn to the finance meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you want to switch spots? How do you...
Yeah, I think you should all get off.
No.
Who I got on the phone? Mark, are you there?
Yes, hello. Hey, Joe.
Okay, so I've got Mark, Kevin, and Bennett. So we're all here. So I guess do this, and do any of us have a question outside of what was already just discussed with the Board of Selectment, which was Lawrence's innovation of doing this all together at once anyway? Okay, then...
I don't have any questions after what was discussed. I pretty much heard most of the better part of the conversation for...
Kevin Bennett, you got anything?
No, I'm good.
All right, then this is simple. Oh, go ahead, Kevin.
No questions here.
So I'll move, we, I'll move that we authorize the, we authorize the approval of the grant application, endorse the grant application. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody? That's three on the phone. We're six zero. I move we adjourn to restore the Board of Selectment to their meeting. I get a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Our job here is done.
Thank you.
Thanks, George Finance. We're the free drinks.
He took it with him.
Okay, so we need a motion to reopen our meeting? Or do you want to just...
You're all set. You adjourn back to your meeting.
Oh, okay.
So we've landed the plan.
So you hit the hangup button.
Number 12, discuss and take action on approving the donation of the Strong Field Plaza.
Duoh, Larry Ciati, Duoh Dickinson, on behalf of our Strong Center Board Directors, we're here to ask you to accept our donation of the Strong Center Entrance Plaza. And Duoh has some designs to hand out.
Just to let you know, we've been bidding this out for the last couple of years, and because we're at a point now where we can pretty definitely state what is what we have and what we need, we want to donate what we have. This is the final phase of Strong Center. The plaza will recognize the many, over 500 people that have donated, and most, all of them residents of Madison, I might add, have donated to the project, and they'll be recognized in various, in various spots in the plaza. And once it's complete by the contractor, it's, it'll finish it off, and it'll probably be one of the best public facilities in Connecticut. Contractor would like to get started possibly November 1st, and I believe he said it would take about three or four weeks. Well, for some phases, it'll, the way this will work out is we have many, many pieces to put together, so it'll be, as weather dictates, it'll, it should be done by the avid and everly heart winner.
So I just, have you guys been down to Spoh's? I think the cubo's are up now.
Yeah, that's great.
It's really looking like it's getting there.
It's exciting.
And this will be, this, you know, this obviously is the finishing touch, but so...
I move that we approve the donation with our extreme gratitude for your dedication and perseverance in this work.
I'll second that. Here, here.
Larry, I think it was 10 years ago you and I had the first conversation.
It was 10 years ago. It was. Duoh didn't have a beard. I had hair, I had hair, but it was 10 years, and, you know, and what has been amazing in this process is the cooperation of the town and private donors. And I think it's a wonderful thing. And Bob can probably support me on this, but I've been here for 46 years, Bob longer, but it might be the single most best cooperative project between town and residents that has ever happened. And I think it might be a sign of the future that these sorts of projects might have to be done in the future, especially with recreational, in recreational areas for future projects. And it can be done. We have wonderful people in Madison, like I said, over 500 have donated, so, and they take ownership into it, which is nice, too. We all have ownership, so, but thank you. Thank you, thank you, Bob.
Congratulations to everybody that was involved.
Thank you.
I have one, can I just ask one quick question? So some residents have, stop it. Some residents have approached me over time just asking for a reminder about the multipurpose component of this plaza and field, whether there's, you know, sort of the artistic component to it, people doing concerts, et cetera. Can you guys just talk just a little bit to the multipurpose aspect, not just athletics?
It's been, it's been listed on the statewide list of potential arts sites, venues in the state by the Shoreline Arts Alliance, and the directors of the Woolleyford Symphony Orchestra are chomping at the bit to actually do handles water music there. I've also talked to the people at Home City Shakespeare, and they just say, this would be phenomenal. Stuff has to be worked out in terms of the wear endurance on the field, but once this is done, we'll have parking, bathrooms, and seating on the sound. It's as good as it gets. So I'm looking forward, we're all looking forward to getting our first real performance there. And there are many people who want to do that, just to make sure that it keeps the field safe and everybody's happy.
Great, thanks.
It has to be outside of the past season.
Yes, or it isn't. An amazing halftime show.
Stacy, is there any reason our motion needs to reflect the dollar amount of this donation?
It is in the form.
It's in the backup.
It's in the backup, yeah.
It's in the back. Is that okay?
Yeah. And we can easily add it into the motion if you'd like me to add it into the motion.
Let's amend it. Why wouldn't we? Motion to amend. To add, to include the amount of $223,300.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, guys. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Number 13, discuss and take action to accept a donation from Rick Dequez in the amount of $22,212. Excuse me, a hire Christianson landscape to perform the native species removal and planting project at West War.
I can speak to this if you'd like.
Yeah, just one more motion is second.
A move?
Okay, go for it, Dan.
So this came to my attention actually through you, Rick Dequez approached you about his interest in trying to beautify the dune at West War. So I contacted DEP and asked for some recommendations on how we go about that and whether or not there are any permitting issues. So there's no permitting issues associated with it. They recommended, you know, removing some of the invasive species, planting native species, keeping some of the snow fencing to delineate the dune, so it's protected from people walking across it. So then I circled back with Rick and asked him to get a concrete proposal to us from a landscape architect or a landscape designer. He hired Christianson Landscape. Donna Christianson is here, she can give you a little bit of an overview of the project. But I reviewed the proposal with Batcutta, who's staff of the Conservation Commission, and he's also a landscape designer. She was happy with what Donna presented. I reviewed it with Heather Crawford, the Chair of the Conservation Commission. She was happy with it. I reviewed it with Scott, and I believe Scott reviewed it with Beach Direct.
Yes.
Think they're happy?
There is a vote to approve the donation.
So from a kind of process standpoint, everybody's gone through several checks and outs of the report after you guys did it. And so I'll let Donna give you a little overview. You all didn't get this in the packet, so I'll provide you with copies of this kind of peruse ad, just a list of what's to be accomplished. Again, Donna will describe it to you and some pictures of the plant. Thank you. Oh, great.
It's in here?
It's here.
Oh, cool.
That's just a bigger version.
In color, too.
Dave, I'm delighted to hear about all the process that went on with this. This selectmen is well aware that in the past, we've learned that the public is very, very concerned about our dunes, especially this particular dune. And I want to make sure there's enough transparency and public process on this based on past lessons that I painfully learned. So I think all the steps you've taken are good steps. My question really is for my five colleagues at this point. I would like to make sure that the public is well aware that this plan is in the works. And I'm not suggesting we need public hearings, but this is coming up very quickly, and I think there's some folks that may well feel that there wasn't enough chance for the public to get their input on this. When you said you chatted with Heather, for example, was that, was her response to you based on a conversation at the Conservation Commission, or was that just...
No, we were, so their meeting, because of the holiday yesterday, their meeting's actually tonight. So she came in the office, and we sat down and reviewed the plans together. She was responding on behalf of the Conservation Commission. You know how the Conservation Commission functions, Heather's the Chair, and she's, you know, pretty much the one that takes the majority of the positions on matters before them. And she felt comfortable speaking on behalf of the commission for that purpose. So it's just a timing issue that it didn't go to the full meeting, so...
Still has to go to the Board of Finance, too.
So it has to go to the Board of Finance. So they will meet tonight, I believe it's on their agenda. And she could, if they did come up with concerns as a group, they could forward it on to the Board of Finance, I guess, or could forward it on to us.
Well, maybe what I'm looking for then is some kind of a conditional approval. If, if the Conservation Commission stumbles on this or feels there's a problem here, I don't want the Board of Selectment to already be on record as having accepted or approved it.
Yeah. My, I guess, opinion on it is there's no approvals required for this activity. So the Conservation Commission is an approval authority. They make recommendations, and they provide guidance to other boards and commissions. So my meeting with Heather was getting input from the Conservation Commission so you guys can make a decision. They don't have to bless it. There's no requirement, there's no charge for them to approve these types of projects. So I got that input, because I thought it'd be valuable to you to be able to move forward. If you wanted something more formal than that, they could certainly undertake that review. But, you know, there's, I'm hesitant to suggest that something like this should require approval authority, because they don't have approval authority. They don't, they don't have that ability.
Another thing is that earlier this summer, Scott's guys went in and tried to remove a lot of the invasives, and, you know, there was no approval for that at all. I mean, they, you know, they checked with DEP or whatever they have to. I mean, they, you know, they checked with DEP or whatever they have to. But the whole point of this is that it's overgrown with invasives that we just can't get rid of without doing this. And those invasives catch all the trash that goes by, you know what I mean? It really, it doesn't just look horrible, it's, it's getting worse all the time. So the idea of this would be, we get all the invasives out of there, and then replace them with stuff that's going to look really nice. I don't, I can't see that anybody would have a problem with that.
I think that...
So even Jerry Verma.
I think Al's point is that we keep people informed.
Right.
And I agree that the Conservation Commission doesn't have an approval authority, they only have recommendations. And I would suggest that we approve this, I think approval by the Board of Finance because of the money piece. But I think as far as decision of what we should be done, I think that lies with us, based on recommendations from our staff. And I would recommend that when we approve this, that we put it on our website, a brief statement of what we're doing, and also photographs of what the plants are going to be likely to do there, so that people are aware that there's going to be something going on. The other question I would have is maintenance. What's the cost of maintenance of this? I'm a little shy because of the plantings in the center of town, that evidently were not quite right for the space that they were given, and they interfere with people and traffic and that kind of stuff.
I think this is a good opportunity for Donna to give you an overview, and then I think she'll be able to answer that question.
Good morning. Yes, aside from, you know, some very pretty plants in the pictures, I think it is important point that, and just to clarify, I think that the, I don't know if this gets translated to anything public eschers, that what it says on your agenda, we are not removing any native plants, we are only removing those that would be considered invasives by the state of Connecticut in particular. So there are a number of invasive plants currently in your dune, and I think that's one of the things that's very highly beneficial for what we're about to undertake. And as you say, they've tried it a little bit, but now we're going to spend a couple of days on it, we're going to do a fair amount of removal. So what happens when you do removal is you disturb. And so it's very important that we then are also being given this wonderful, or you're being given this wonderful gift by Rick DeKes, of them planting it at the same time. So if we not only go in and take out the plants that at this point are starting to invade, fragmites, you know, you've got bamboo in there, you've got things that basically will outcompete all of the grasses that have been planted by the conservation agencies that have come in and done the various plugs for them over the past few years. Also, one of the things that we're undertaking this time with this planting, we're planting some of the same grasses, the beech grass, that they've been planting, but they've been planting it, because of budgetary constraints, as plugs. We're now going to plant them as one gallon grasses. When you're putting in a one gallon grass, you're going to have a much better opportunity of that grass succeeding, and hopefully not getting blown away, washed away, or in some way disturbed. So this will do a much better restoration of the dune. We want to protect the dune. We're also going to beautify it, certainly. The grasses are going to, in and of themselves, are beautiful. We're adding a few perennials, predominantly on the lawn side and towards the beach side of the residences, because that's the more protected area. We can't really put a lot of perennials on the seaside, they won't survive the commission. So each of these plants has been selected for their tolerance of the level of salinity that's there, the fact that many of them have very, very deep tap roots. Roots, the Baptisia that's going in here establishes itself with like a three-foot tap root. Most of these grasses, including this blond ambition grass, it's a three to six-foot root system. These are things that, once they're planted and established, will help to maintain, establish, and provide for many years of this dune, which is so important to the town of Madison. So I think that in addition to the fact that we will make it very pretty, we will also make it forever by planting these plants and keeping out these invasives. So I think that's important. As far as, you know, from a designer's standpoint, I try to select plant material also that will give us continued this bloom. We've got the interest from very early spring all the way through fall, as well as grasses that turn different shades of red and orange in the fall and winter. So we've got great color and interest. So I think all of the town's residents will enjoy being able to walk out there and see this. We'll be attracting many more butterflies and bees and birds through the pollination aspect. We're putting in butterfly weed, which of course is what the monarch butterfly likes to lay its caterpillars, the eggs on, so they'll feed on that, and they'll pick a lot more monarchs out of it. So we're developing also a pollinator, pollen. So all of these things are benefits of this planting, and it's a very, very generous planting. So I think, you know, it's pretty exciting for the town of Madison to be able to happen. And as far as maintenance, these are low maintenance plants. These are ostensibly plant material that go into a meadow, if I have meadows, if I do a large perennial planting, these are things, in fact, I was, I was telling Dave that just coincidentally, I happen to be at the New York Botanical Gardens, new native garden, which they've only planted about three, four years ago, and many of these plants were used in their native plant garden, which if you look at it from afar, just looks like a giant field of gorgeous mass planting. And it's, that's the idea with native plantings, you plant these for low maintenance, very little need, you know, there's not going to, we don't want to be adding fertilizers, we don't want to be having to cut these things back because the seed heads are what the birds feed on in the winter. All of these things should require very low maintenance. The only thing we'll have to do is deal with the establishment initially. That's the one thing. So we're hoping, and that's one of the reasons why our timeline is a little bit pushed here, and why we kind of like to move it along as quickly as we can, is because obviously we've got a planting window right now, and we'd like to get this in before, too late this fall. And it's advantageous, based on the fact that there's very low traffic level in that area for the next few months. If we wait until spring, early spring, when we would be able to plant, that's a very busy season for people coming up to the beach area, all of that, so we'd rather try to get it knocked off now. Also, it's wonderful for natural water to be able to plant now, so that we don't have to be out there irrigating and watering through the summer. Hopefully, we'll be able to get these plants established really well this fall, get their root systems going during the winter, and in the spring, start to look really beautiful, start looking.
Well, you said all the right things as far as I'm concerned. It's not just about aesthetics, it's about the health of the dune. And I think that's very important. I was recently at Hammond Asset State Park, and I noticed some educational signage near some of the dunes, which sort of helped the public understand what the dune was about and why certain plantings are here. I was wondering if anything like that had been contemplated in your design.
It hasn't been.
No, but we could talk, I can circle back, because that would be a good ask for the Conservation Commission, honestly.
Absolutely, yeah.
Try to consider installing signs that explain the importance of the dune. So I could ask them about that, if you'd like, Dave.
Well, can I ask one more question?
Oh, go ahead.
So we're removing all the invasives, what is the likelihood of return of the invasives? I mean, do you intend to get them all in first pass, or would we have to come back and do it in another couple of years?
Well, it's a twofold process, removing, and hopefully removing as much as we can possibly remove. But on the other hand, we're also planting, and by planting, and planting plants that will fill the space fairly readily, we are hoping that less establishment of invasives will happen in the future. Because that is really the way that you plant natives, is with, with the idea of planting them close, letting them establish quickly. And again, they have these deeper tap roots, so they tend to spread and take over a lot more of the soil more quickly. And then in addition, it just allows for less space for seeds to drop in. Doesn't mean, we're also, you know, part of the process, we've got Rosa regosa there, which is borderline invasive as far as the state of Connecticut is. We're going to cut some of it back, but that will eventually...
Creak back in.
But it's still a very good plant to leave where it is for what it's doing as far as preserving the dune, and the space that it takes up, it would be planting, you know, ten times what we're doing here. So I think that it's worth keeping it, just maintaining it a little, and that will require, but that's encroaching on the bench area. So we think it's important for the public to be able to utilize that bench. So we're going to pull it back, plant some grasses around it, but eventually that will require some maintenance. It's not to say that this will be a totally no maintenance area, but it'll be much, it'll be limited, and it will help, planting these plants will help to discourage the invasives from seeding it.
With the motion on the table.
I have one other comment. As a part of our public information effort, I would suggest that we send a letter to the Garden Club, because I remember the experience we had with the median divider with the Garden Club, and I'd like to prevent that happening again.
And they're welcome to contact me as well.
Well, Tom, I'm ready to vote affirmatively on this, with the understanding that if the Conservation Commission, for some reason, is uncomfortable with this, that this matter will come back to us. I, I'm not ready to give an unconditional approval until the Conservation Commission has issued their opinion. I realize they don't have approval authority.
I respect your comment, but I disagree. I think we, we, they're informed, and it's our job to approve this or to get started. And there's nothing in here that's going to harm anybody. So I think that keeping them in the loop is fine, but I don't, I wouldn't want to wait until they went through their process.
As far as keeping them in the loop, so I talked to Donna, Bob Cookte, who's staff to the Conservation Commission, is going to be directly involved with the project. He's going to be notified if the commencement's going to work, and he's keeping an eye on things from the town's perspective. And Heather, as well, I told her that I would notify her before any work started, so she could go out there and observe what was going on, if she had any concerns, or her and Bob had any concerns. I think the work with Donna will address that as the project is happening, so she'll be notified. That answers your question directly, but just another layer. There will be some supervision of the project from that standpoint as well.
I think the motion we have is approval, pending approval by the Board of Finance.
Right. I guess there's two different things going on here. One is the acceptance of the donation, and the other is the proper way to carry out the project itself. And maybe, Bob, you and I are sort of getting it too mixed up with each other. I'm certainly prepared to accept the donation, but I guess I'm asking that the wishes of the Conservation Commission, and Bob Cookte, and others be respected throughout this implementation phase, and that I wouldn't want to think that our accepting the donation means that the expertise of these individuals is ignored. So, Bob, I'm trying to bridge our difference here.
I don't think it's been ignored. The Chair of the Conservation Commission's been involved. The Chair feels that it was a fine project, and kind of spoke to the Commission, saying that there's no reason they would reject it. I think the intent of the Conservation Commission is to make recommendations. I think they've had that opportunity. If she had some major problem with this, she would have...
She had a concern, she would have certainly asked me to not put it on the agenda, to table it, in order to allow them time to review. She would have definitely done that, she's done that with plenty of other projects.
Because I think once we approve this, once the Board of Finance approves it, they're going to get started, and they have to get it done before snow flies. And snow already flew in Colorado, so it's on the way.
Right. If there's a problem, Board of Finance can always not approve it.
So has, so, you know, listening to Al's concern that the Conservation Commission is aware and in agreement with the plan, does the Chair, you said the Chair speaks on behalf of?
So typically how it works is she'll typically write letters on behalf, so they'll meet as a group on applications to go before the planning and zoning commission. And she's the most vocal individual on the Conservation Commission, and probably in some ways, the most knowledgeable of these types of projects. And so she's comfortable speaking for the group on a lot of occasions. So they did not meet about it, because they're meeting it tonight. But she, she sat down, and she was comfortable saying that there's no issue with what she saw, she was happy with the proposal, so...
I mean, what's the harm with us putting a conditional something in the motion, though, to...
Because it has to come back to us.
Because...
No, no, only if they have an issue, they would come back to us.
But they're only...
A recommend...
And they have no authority to approve or disapprove. So I think putting it in the motion raises their level of authority, and I think that's not proper.
I agree. I'm okay with accepting the donation. I'm looking for some reassurance that during the implementation phase, that the town still retains some measure of control over what actually happens.
Well, it's, so it's town property, so if I'm out there and Scott sees an issue, we can halt the project. Donna's, obviously, has the best intentions for this project, and I think she has the best expertise on how to proceed with it, but if we notice anything that we're not comfortable with, I'm sure she's going to be cooperative and halt work until we can figure it out. But we do have the option to say, either, "No, we don't want you to start now," for whatever reason this issue surfaced, or we need you to stop this portion of work until we wrap our heads around it. We have that authority.
If it was plant also, that for some reason they said, "We'd rather you didn't plant this," and we'd rather, we could always offer, you know, a change of a plant with them or something, if that was...
Okay, I'm, Dave, you made a good point here. I accept that. You and Scott, and perhaps Heather, will be monitoring implementation, and if you don't like what you see, you'll be using their existing authority to intercede.
Yeah, absolutely. And we gave Rick in our initial conversation some guidance on how to go about doing this, and that's why we've been hiring a professional. And, you know, so I think we've already given a lot to keep this thing on a narrow track for a while, so...
Thank you. And I think it's worth adding that our intention here is not to ride roughshod over the Conservation Commission, per se. They should, in evaluation or in discussion, say, "Well, here's an aspect of it that we didn't consider." The expectation of this board would be that that comes back to us as soon as possible, so that we could have the opportunity to reconsider our position.
Yeah, it's not like a timing thing.
Yeah, it's just a, it's just a timing thing, exactly.
But as we sit here now, we really think we have the, the...
I know.
The agreement.
I don't think I do. I know I have the agreement, yeah.
Would it be possible for you just to send us, and I'm assuming you're attending that Conservation conversation?
Sometimes, Bob Cookte normally...
Could somebody just send us a quick, just update that all is green lighted, so to speak?
Yeah, I'll get you something from Heather.
Yeah, perfect. I think that would make things a lot better as well. Great. So the motion is on the table, right?
It is. Has been for about half an hour. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next three items are, have to do with the Madison Historical Society Gala, which is on...
The nineteenth.
You should know that, huh?
The nineteenth.
The nineteenth. And these three, these three proclamations have to do with people who are being honored at the gala, and so we wanted to offer proclamations pursuant to that. Who should I read the first one?
Sure. Whereas Jack Heflin and Lori Heflin have had a tremendous impact on the town of Madison, including with their work for the Madison Foundation and Neighbor to Neighbor, and whereas Jack Heflin and Lori Heflin have committed their lives in Madison to the preservation of the past and protection of the future of the town and its people, and whereas Jack Heflin and Lori Heflin will be honored at the Madison Historical Society Gala on October nineteenth, 2017, at the Madison Beach Hotel, now therefore, we, the members of this board, hereby unanimously acknowledge the tireless efforts of Jack Heflin and Lori Heflin done this tenth day of October, 2017, in the town of Madison, Connecticut.
Okay, so before we do anything, I have to read the item. Discuss and take action to approve the proclamation honoring Jack and Lori Heflin.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So the grasses couldn't be, the plantings are going to be in by the nineteenth?
No, no. October nineteenth?
We can't go back to that topic.
Number fifteen, discuss and take action to approve a proclamation honoring Joe Osslander.
Al? Thank you, Tom. The proclamation reads, whereas Joseph Joe Osslander has had a tremendous impact on the town of Madison, specifically with his work to preserve the land at Rockland, and whereas Joe Osslander has committed his life in Madison to the education of youth and scouts, through which he has helped create twelve miles of hiking trails and ten miles of bike trails, an outdoor classroom, a handicap viewing platform, and open pit charcoal site at Rockland. And whereas Joe will be honored at the Madison Historical Society Gala on October nineteenth, we, the members of the Board of Selectmen, hereby unanimously acknowledge the tireless efforts of Joe Osslander. I would like to add that in addition to all of these things that Joe has done, Joe's been an active member of the Madison Land Trust for a very long time, and has created miles and miles of more trails in Madison that are even retained on the, on the town-owned land. Joe currently chairs the stewardship committee of the Land Trust and is responsible for the maintenance of all those trails. So I approve of this proclamation. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Number sixteen, discuss and take action to approve a proclamation honoring Donald Rankin. I'll read this one. Whereas Don Rankin has had a tremendous impact on the town of Madison, including his involvement with the Madison Historical Society, the Friends of Hammond Asset, the Madison Land Conservation Trust, and the Friends of the Office of State Archaeology, and whereas Don Rankin has committed his life in Madison to the education and preservation of the history of the roots of the town, and whereas Don Rankin will be honored at the Madison Historical Society Gala on October nineteenth, 2017, at the Madison Beach Hotel, now therefore, we, the members of this board, hereby unanimously acknowledge the tireless efforts of Donald Rankin done this the tenth day of October, 2017, in the town of Madison.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Number seventeen, tax payments and refunds. You'll keep me busy. Keep me busy.
What do you think? That's usually the answer. Sure. Will we approve the refunds and abatements of $7,362.39?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Number 18. Citizen comments.
Just wanted to remind everybody that this Saturday is the Bauer Festival. It's 20th year, and it runs from 11 to 3. Hopefully, we get good weather, like we did last year, and hope everybody comes out fast.
Great, thank you, Scott.
Tom, I'd like to move that we open the agenda for the purpose of discussing capital project budgeting.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so-
So, after two years of going through the CIP process, the committee has identified some areas of improvement to the process and to the regulation, and Scott and I, as members of the committee, thought that this would be a natural time for us as a board to talk about capital budgeting from the Board of Selectmen's perspective and to make sure that we have consensus on exactly what our expectations are of the process. So to that end, Scott and I have worked out a visual of what the capital budgeting process we think should look like, right? So this is not necessarily a direct translation of what's happened today, either in the CIP or in just through common practice, but more of an idealized version of what we think should happen. And it starts with really three high-level operating principles that guide our thinking through the process. And the first one is that the Board of Selectmen are responsible for planning and execution of capital projects. The Board of Finance is responsible for total budget appropriations, and that the CIP is the working committee that is merging those two budgeting responsibilities to create a reasonable and responsible capital budget. Okay? So to start at the top, and Scott, you can-
Yeah, can I just even just make a comment on that, Bruce, real quick?
Sure.
So I think, you know, one of the intentions as we started to think about this was, you know, not only process improvements, but process maybe simplification, but also an aspect maybe of role clarity as well here, so that, you know, we ensure that, you know, one, we're not stepping on each other's toes through the process, and two, that, you know, each of the boards, Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and CIP as the recommending body, are collaborating appropriately with each other, but also ensuring that each one sort of knows what the other is doing, and we have very defined roles. So, you know, the Board of Selectmen certainly governing from a strategy standpoint, Board of Finance, you know, looking at total budget appropriations, but not necessarily at the project level, as opposed to what the Board of Selectmen might be looking at with the CIP.
Right, and that's, so that's one of the sort of intuitive ideas that we wanted to talk about, that, you know, what are our respective roles, not in a regulated sense or a statutory sense, but in a common sense perspective. And again, this is setting our mutual expectations now, so that when we get to late winter and we're voting on budgets, we are getting back what we expected, and the process, the handoff happens in a way that we think it should happen. And I think we've had a couple of years of missed expectations on that front, and so we're looking to have that discussion now, beginning with the budget process.
I think this is part of what we had told the Board of Finance we were going to do, so we were going to-
Absolutely.
You know, define our role in the process, because I think last year, things got a little bit skewed and-
And money.
Yeah, and just with, you know, I think maybe not even according to charter last year, we'll move through the budget process in certain circumstances. So we want to reassert what our role is, as well as acknowledging what their roles are. Bob made a comment to me before about the CIP being an advisory group.
So the CIP is probably best thought of, and I'm going to credit Joe with most of this thought, because he's the one who's been educating me on it. The CIP really represents the process by which the Board of Finance will consider a capital plan, okay? So in and of itself, it has no vested authority, right? It's just simply a mechanism through which the Board of Finance will consider capital budgets.
And the capital budget is totalling, too, not necessarily at the project level?
Well, so I think this is, yes, so we go between what is the sort of chartered and statutory rights of the Board of Finance versus what's the practical execution of our budgeting process. And we could argue that the Board of Finance has the right to make line-out changes to the Board of Selectmen budget, but I think it would be a harder argument to say they should do that, unless it's a Board of Selectmen that are acting and behaving badly and not in the best interest of the town. So, you know, we like this $5,000 project better than that $5,000 project, so we're going to override. That would seem to be not a good use of the Board of Finance's authority, but if we were to, I don't know, embark on gold plating all the fixtures at Town Hall, then the Board of Finance would certainly be within their right to say, "We're questioning your judgment on this particular initiative." So I think because you can't write a regulation around all of those types of instances, it's really important to agree sort of at the higher level what our roles are, and I think it's imperative that we as a Board of Selectmen agree on what we think the role is, and for several reasons. One, it's a way for us to communicate to the Board of Finance what we're hoping to do. It also provides guidance to Scott and I as we work through the CIP process, which brings value. I mean, there's a lot of work that happens in that committee, and I'm not sure we want to take on all of that work as a Board of Selectmen. I think that it's a good way to accomplish our core role, or one of our core roles, in an efficient manner.
Yeah, and I think it also helps, you know, in the context of the CIP specifically, that Bruce and I aren't necessarily going in as individual selectmen, but we're representing the five of us, you know, as the Board of Selectmen through the process, so, you know, that we would be a lot blocking in, which I think is important.
Right, very.
My concern is, the words on the paper that we understand can be interpreted differently in the future. And the way I read this, it gives the CIP more authority than it has. The CIP, as we read it, merges the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance budgeting responsibilities. Well, that's only for capital projects, and they're, they make recommendations on the merger, they don't merge it.
So you're 100% right. So the context of this document is only for capital.
Okay.
Okay?
It doesn't say that.
Well, it's just in the title.
Well, but still, the words that are put in there, I think have to be clarified.
Yeah, we can type them up.
And the other is that I think it needs to be clear that the CIP is, makes recommendations, that they do not have authority. And it doesn't say, the way you read this, you give this to the average person on the street, they have the same status in this chart as the other two boards.
So this, and this is why we're bringing it up, right? Right?
The same issue as in the-
So achieving alignment starts with a discussion about it, and rather than ask the board to start with a blank page, Scott and I have tried to-
Absolutely. I think you've done an amazing job. I think it clarifies it a lot, but looking at it, I just think it needs to be tweaked a little bit to make sure that we understand CIP is a recommending committee, not a committee with any authority.
Okay, so-
And maybe it's just a slight wording difference between working committee and recommending committee. We can tweak that, that's not a big deal.
Yeah, so really embedded in this thought of how the process should work is the notion that there's a conversation happening in real time. And so the first example of that is in the creation of a plan where, on the town side, the department heads are discussing with Tom and Stacy and receiving feedback from Tom and Stacy, or the First Selectmen, if you will, on their plan, and it's fit. It's fit financially, it's appropriateness financially, it's completeness financially, and then it's fit with what we're hoping to accomplish in the town, okay? So that by the time it comes formally through and is finished form through the Director of Finance, and then onto the Office of the First Selectmen, neither of those two seats are surprised with what they've got, right? The first big new notion here to the process is that the next stop in that capital plan is the Board of Selectmen. And we've talked, I think, formally and informally about this step, and I have not heard anybody dissent, that we shouldn't be weighing in as a Board of Selectmen. This is an appropriate step in the process and an appropriate role for the Board of Selectmen to evaluate the plan for, fit with what we're hoping to accomplish as a Board of Selectmen and as a town, and also to begin the process of becoming familiar with each of the projects, right? So this is not a sum total look at the budget, it's a look at the projects individually. I think we have to decide how much work we want to do around that. Do we want to have workshops and have every single project presented to us? Do we want to filter some of them out and say, you know, "Above this or below that, we don't want to see it," and then rely on the committee to do most of that final diligence work?
I want to build on your thought here, Bruce. You know, as we've talked about this over the last couple of weeks, I think, too, you know, it's Tom walking into the Board of Selectmen with his recommendation to us as the Board of Selectmen, and we're vetting that recommendation together, but I think as an output of that recommendation, what might be nice is for us as a Board of Selectmen to then come up with our list of priorities, so that we're then ultimately providing guidance to the CIP. So again, our role in the process is to provide that strategic guidance, whether it points to a strategic plan or not, but at the end of the day, we should be providing guidance back to the CIP so that they understand where the Board of Selectmen sit in terms of priorities.
Right, and so the language we've used in this document, which is really an internal working document for us right now, is that at that Board of Selectmen review, we would be approving the list of projects, and we would be approving the priority of those projects, and then we'd be suggesting funding. And that's clearly one of our roles as defined in the Charter, so it's appropriate for us to do that.
Bruce said the level of BOs review, would the board be looking at all the projects that were submitted, or only the projects that escaped from the First Selectmen's review?
So I think that we would get essentially two lists. We would get the First Selectmen's recommended plan, and then we would have appended to that the ones that didn't make the cut. And I think that that just allows the board to have a conversation about those items that didn't make the cut. And I think that's, it's just a common sense approach to it. I am suggesting that the list that we send on to the CIP, the only part of the list that's actionable by the CIP would be the one that we approve. Okay, so I have no problem transmitting projects that weren't moved forward by this board, but I don't think I want to create an opportunity for another committee to override the planning responsibility of this board at the same time. Does that make sense? So the approved project list then moves on to the CIP, and again, a conversation needs to happen in real time, and I think it's important that this is an expectation of the Board of Selectmen, and that the representatives from the Board of Selectmen, Scott and myself, go to the CIP knowing that we are going to be reporting back to you on the work with some frequency, with some detail, such that you have a level of comfort that the plan is being discussed in the way that we expected, as the five of us. Also, if the plan should be changing for some reason, and there could be any number of reasons why it might be changing, we're bringing that back to you in real time as well, so that you can provide input and say, you know, "We agree with this changing information, and we're happy and content with the input that the committee is making." Again, this is all aimed at, when it comes back to the Board of Selectmen, there's no surprises, because by the time we get to that point in our budgeting season, everybody's hair is on fire and we're up against deadlines, and so surprising any board that late in the process just doesn't serve us well. Of course, the budget has got to come back to the Board of Selectmen for approval. That's just part of the process, right? So we're not proposing to change that at all, and we would have that opportunity to say, "Yes, everything's happened the way we expected, and we agree." I'm hard pressed to come up with an example of why we would say suddenly, "No, you know, we don't, we're going to vote down." But should that eventuality happen, I think it would just have to go back to the CIP with some recommendation from the board on changes. I mean, perhaps something, you know, extraneous to the town, you know, the state declares bankruptcy or something like that.
No foreshadowing there.
You know, that might be, you know, some late-breaking piece of data that causes us to throw out all of our early budget season assumptions, but-
Bruce, could you look at the lowest gray shaded box and tell me if that reads the way you want it to read?
We have changed that on a previous-
Oh.
So that is, that should be Board of Finance, right? And so that has been made, that change has been made.
Good.
I'm not sure how it lead into this particular topic.
Play it on the computer.
Pardon?
Play it on the computer.
I may have used the wrong third. Play it on Scott. Yeah, could be on me. Play it on Powerpoint.
So, you know, this is, this has all been fairly much in alignment with the way the process works. I'm not sure we've had the real-time conversation happening. I think we probably, you know, we need to be more vigilant, and I are doing it. I'm sure that you guys, as a town, and the department heads, talk all the time, so that's probably a very natural process that's occurring now. But where we get into now the gray spaces, what happens if the Board of Finance chooses to change the plan that we approve? I think that we should communicate to the Board of Finance that we'd like them to provide guidance on the finance of it, right? So, geez, guys, we just, you know, you've asked for $2 million, and we really only have a million and a half. Modify your plan to be a million and a half, rather than exercising what may be their prerogative to go in and choose what projects they want to modify.
I think that's really the most important essential.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I think the best we can hope to do, short of changing the Charter, is, and maybe even state statute, is just to make that request of them, that in the spirit of working together, we're going to make a commitment to putting thought into the plan and the projects. Please just don't undo that after we've- Please just don't undo that after we've communicated to the CIP.
So, the analogy is the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance don't have line item authority to change the board of energy.
Correct.
And I think what you're suggesting here is the Board of Finance should not have line item authority to go through the capital budget and cherry pick which ones they like and not like. Rather, the Board of Finance should be looking at the total, the aggregation, and making a judgment as to whether that's affordable or not affordable.
Right.
And if they think it's too big a number, they should tell us to go back and do the line item review to eliminate.
I think so. I think so. I mean, I think that there's a strong argument to say that they actually do have that authority, where the request is that they use great restraint in exercising it.
Yeah, and honestly, reviewing the roles and responsibilities in the charter, it's gray. So, you know, I think what we're trying to do here is to help with a bit of that role clarity so that we're not stepping on each other's toes.
I think that this is a great clarification that we haven't seen before. I just hope that it gets tweaked a little bit. But I think it's a fantastic effort, and I think it also shows a high degree of cooperation between the boards. If all the boards accept this, I think it's a good start and amen.
Thank you, guys, for doing that.
Yeah. How do we want to proceed directionally with this, Bruce, just in terms of next steps?
I have told the Board of Finance that I would be reporting back to them at the next meeting.
Great.
So, I mean, you know, I think just based on Bob's comment, just a couple of tweaks that you might want to make and then correct that last great law.
Sure. Well, and we didn't have, we didn't put dates in there, too. The farther out we got, the fuzzier we got on the dates.
I mean, and I think the dates were up for discussion, too.
Oh, definitely.
Yeah. But this should be ready to go for me to read.
I guess the question I would sort of raise to Tom is, is it something that we as the Board of Selectmen, as the governing body here, should be taking action on such that we're putting a process in place more formally so that we're all working to the same playbook?
I think it would be appropriate if this board took action and supported the concepts and passed it on to the Board of Finance. I don't think it's something you can approve as a regulation or anything else, but it's a...
So, we've discussed it. We want to approve it as a concept to represent it to the Board of Finance. Want to make that motion?
Sure, I'll make that a motion.
I'll second that.
Okay. Further discussion? All in favor?
All right. I want to make sure we thank our two selectmen who put in a lot of work on this.
I just want to, this is a point of procedure. So, the agenda was open to discuss. Do we want to, do we have to open the agenda or do we have to add another?
You have to add another item to discuss and take action to approve what you just approved.
So, do we want to amend the original thing or do we want to add a second?
Discuss and take action.
So, I amend the, opening the agenda to discuss and take action.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have to go back and do a redo on the vote or are we good?
She's also, she has a adjourned already.
I wish I did.
So do I.
Okay, number 19 liaison report, selectmen comments. Who's with us?
I'll go first. So, Rockland, this isn't exactly, this is more of a comment than a liaison report. So, the Rockland Preserve and the Viking Trails, the single tracks in Rockland are getting extraordinary usage. I think the numbers we're talking about are maybe as high as 1,000 visitors a week.
Wow.
And if you drive by any late afternoon during the week, you're going to see the Route 79 parking lot will be filled. It's just getting terrific use. And there continues to be building in there. We're aware of the pump track. There's some downhill lines that are being put in with different types of obstacles and ways for people to entertain themselves on bicycles. And if you're like me, fall. But we're getting the attention of local merchants who are looking for some way to participate in, as Larry mentioned, you know, we're kind of in a new era of public-private collaboration. So, we are looking to have a conversation here with economic development, with Jason from Rockland Preserve, Tom and I, I think I'm just doing it as an interested person to talk about how we might craft a position on how we want to receive that private money and the limits that we might want to put on it. As you might imagine, a merchant who's in the biking business might want to have a lot of signage up, right, in return for money. And I think we need to develop a policy and a position on that.
I would include Scott in that, too.
I'm sorry, yes, and Scott, of course. Well, he's, you're already on the list, I just forgot. And so, there are some really novel ideas being thrown around about what can be done. And I'm comfortable that we'll find a way to encourage as much financial donation as possible and not destroy the character or the culture of that particular piece of property. I think it also gives us guidance on how to move forward with other properties as well.
Bruce, is the Rockland Oversight Committee also on your list?
Of...
Jason Engelhardt is on it.
Jason Engelhardt is on it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is he representing the committee or just his own?
So, he would be, he would be there for both. He would fill both seats.
Yeah, I may not just check up on that because I was at a beach work meeting, which was at Rockland Preserve last week. We helped out there. And Joe is intimately involved with us, Joe Ossender. Jason is kind of the brains behind the whole thing. So, that committee is very well represented in terms of anything that we do up there moving forward. All the progress has been due to them. I'll save the rest of my comments if anybody else wants a thought. Bruce, are you ready?
Yeah. You know, I came over there from the Board of Ed, but they hosted their first PTO meeting, and the first PTO meeting was Ivan Avenue School. And I guess it was an interesting meeting. And they were 70 people there. So, they got the year off to a good start, and they said they're ready to welcome new board education members in just a few weeks. That's it.
Mark, can you do it?
I do not have anything.
The Pension Committee has sent out the RFP for investment advisors, and I guess the phone's been ringing, so the process is well underway.
I just have a couple of things kind of all over the place. Luke Conway, who's working on his Eagle Scout, actually invited me to his project, which, you know, usually you get invited to the ceremony afterwards. But I showed it to his project, which was totally different than what other Eagles have done. Usually it's some kind of construction project. And his was actually an awareness project to bring a bunch of people of different abilities together along with the agencies that represent him. So, Sarah was there, Vista was there. Septo was there. A bunch of the senior daycare center was there. So, he really did a tremendous job, and I have to commend him on that. And I also appreciate being invited to it, so I...
How did the weather hold up on that?
Beautiful.
Was it okay?
Yeah, never rained.
Good.
In the last couple of weeks, I've been to a Council of Small Towns Board of Directors meeting and a Connecticut Education and Municipalities Legislative Committee meeting, both of which discussed in great detail the situation with the state budget and the problems therein. And we've come up with, Cost is getting ready to prepare a lawsuit against the state if they try to put the teachers' pensions on us. CCM would likewise do the same thing. The Connecticut Education Association has already initiated a lawsuit against the governor for his intention to push the pensions out to the town. So, you know, it's going to be an interesting next couple of weeks.
Tom, along that line, has there been any further understanding of whether state mandates would still apply to towns that receive no funding from the state? Is there going to be any wiggle room for us in there?
It's a mandate, it's a mandate. We don't have, you know, just because we don't get funded doesn't mean, there are tons of unfunded mandates. And my understanding is if you try to extricate yourself from the mandates, the state will sue you to... So, in those budgets that have come through or the one that came through, there have been some mandates, there's been some mandate really proposed. But as you know, that budget was vetoed, and there's been no vote yet to override the veto, although Cost did have a, we did a, you know, not a proclamation, but we asked that the legislature overturn the veto. We went and had a press conference up at the Capitol to make that request in public. So, and CCM did not do that, but, you know, they're all hoping that the legislature will get together and pass a new budget at least. The only other thing I have is last week we had the Madison Athletics Hall of Fame ceremony. Nine new people were inducted. And they were also introduced the next night at the football game. So, I think we're up to about 65 people now in all, right? And that's all.
Getting back to your comments on the budget, you know, we've been talking about this impending problem, and I think that's important for us to do as a board. When do we start to take action on it to better shore up our position in light of, well, I think November 1st is another big milestone, right?
Yeah. Is it?
Something with the...
Something being released?
With the executive warning we...
Yeah. And, you know, this is, the exposure to our budget this year is about 1.4 million. And then you can handicap how much of that is truly at risk. That doesn't include special education money, right? Which is another one, four or five?
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred. Oh, good. So, this is potentially a deficit in the current budget. So, there is always the, what are we going to do for next year? But we have real exposure this year, and we are going into our second quarter here. So, at some point, we start to make decisions that we can't undo. We start to make commitments to spend money that we can't do. And I'll go on record as I don't want to have, I don't want to be doing supplemental tax bills. I don't want to see the Board of Finance have to do that. I don't think that's a practical concern for us this year. The boards historically have done a good job of partnership, and we find ourselves able to weather this year, even if it's at its worst. But we can't do that for two years in a row. And if, and I'll just, I'm just going to use round numbers for this. If we were to lose a million dollars in funding, it means that next year's budget starts with a million dollar increase in taxes.
A million dollars in cuts.
Or a million dollars in cuts, right? So, anything we can do to mitigate that by not spending this year takes the edge off of that large amount. So, again, the question is, when do we start taking action to...
Last week I asked Stacy to prepare some figures for some kind of a limited spending phase. And we'll have a chance to talk about that next day or so. So, that'll be a proposal that I'll be putting forward.
Is it appropriate for us to communicate to the other boards, even if it's just a consensus communication, to the Board of Education, the Board of Finance, that, certainly the Board of Education looking at their budgets, what can they do to help? We can't tell them. We can ask them politely.
No, but one of the things, this sort of goes back to a previous topic, but one of the things that Bruce and I kicked around relative to our capital improvement process was this notion of the Board of Finance providing us with maybe a bit more targeting, you know, and objective, you know, something that we can sort of latch on to as we're going through the initial parts of the planning process so that we're not planning in a vacuum, we're planning to reality. So, you know, maybe as we're talking to the Board of Finance, there may be an opportunity to, you know, ask them in their process to provide more guidance to us as we're planning. It's just about...
There's also some other things that should be discussed for the future, particularly if the state decides the towns are responsible for part of the teacher's retirement. Is that a town expense or is there going to be a board education expense? Because it makes a difference. And I think that's something that the boards have to discuss. And I'm confident that the state will do something in the future about future pension and town responsibility. I don't think it's going to be a third, but I think it's going to, they're going to get the camel's nose in the door, and they're going to start with something. But I think you have to be prepared before that with how you're going to handle that locally. For instance, all the bonds for school construction become part of the board education budget. It's below the line, but it's still part of their budget responsibility. Will the teachers' pension do the same thing? And how do you handle that? And not many towns make construction projects part of the board education budget. I said when we built the police station, we should add that to the police budget, but that didn't happen. And so, I think you need to take a look at that and make some planning for the next couple of years because I'm sure that the state will do something.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is executive session, so...
And we're going to executive session to discuss building security.
Who are we inviting to select this?
I'd like to invite Art Chigle and Bill McMin.
All in favor?